...council meeting, those who'd like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
Father.
Father.
How we love you.
Our kingdom come.
How we love you down on our earth as it is in heaven. Give us to share daily bread. And give us your trust access. And we give you the Lord's trust access against us. And we are not to temptation, but deliver us to kingdom. For that is the kingdom and the power and the glory forever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Glad to see everybody here tonight. Mr. Kramer, I think we'll start with you on a couple of minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. A couple of additions to the amendment, to the agenda, if it pleased the council. The work session, closed work session minutes from January the 6th were withdrawn from the agenda at the last meeting, and they were to be brought back. They have been distributed. I don't know if all of you have had an opportunity to read them. If you have not, they can be brought before you at the next meeting. But if you are ready to approve them, would you add this to your agenda?
Anybody object to this? Everybody's had time to review them. Okay, Mr. Kramer.
The second item is, in addition to the minutes, or to the meeting this evening, Resolution Number 34-2015, it will be Item E. under my agenda, and it's a resolution to extend the date for the county council to adopt the capital improvements budget.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer.
Back to you, Mr. President. Minutes?
Yes. First, on the agenda, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of January 20th, 2015.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion, corrections? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We have the approval of the open work session minutes from January 20th, 2015, Part One.
So moved.
Any corrections, adjustments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Minutes have been approved. And then the approval of the open work session, Part Two, minutes from January 20th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections? I better check. Hold on a second, I'm sorry. I may have some. I didn't pay attention there. If I could, on the part one work session, January 20th, 2015, it's just a small difference. It was noted that the council gave a consensus for a hybrid board. I would make that a unanimous consensus. Sorry about that. Wasn't paying attention. All right, let's get back. Any other comments in reference to the work session, Part Two, minutes, January 20th? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Minutes have been approved.
Opposed minutes, January 6th.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and do the closed work session for January 6th, 2015. Everybody's had a chance to review them, I would assume. Any corrections? All those in favor of approving the minutes for the closed work session, January 6th, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Closed work session minutes have been approved.
Next item for council's consideration is the submission of the capital improvements program.
You've got to swear in.
Oh, my goodness. All these important young people here, and I was about to skip right over them. They had their pictures taken, and I mistakenly thought it was finished. Is Mr. Theopulos Williams here this evening?
Thelonious.
Thelonious, I beg your pardon. Here, I practiced.
So Theopulos was a great man.
I practiced that all day. Mr. Williams, would you ask your council members to come up, and they will be sworn in by the clerk of the court?
Yes, I have a couple opening remarks, if that's okay, just to lay out what this is. But if the council members would please stand up front. There's been a lot of questions as to what this is, so I wanted to clear some of those up. Thank you all very much for taking the time to allow me to introduce this year's, you can probably turn and face the audience.
Especially if your parents are watching on Pac-14 at home.
Yes, exactly. So I'd like to introduce this year's Salisbury-Wycomico Youth Civics Council. My name is Thelonious Williams. I'm an AmeriCorps Program Coordinator of the Council and a Salisbury native. In these opening remarks, I wish to explain the purpose and mandate of this council. In speaking of growing up in Brooklyn during the 1920s and 1930s, Alfred Kizan described Brooklyn, unfortunately, as a place that measured all success by our scale in getting away from it. Sadly, to me and many other Wycomico natives, this quote rings true. As our senior years in high school come upon us, we gleefully look forward to leaving the area. We eagerly await attending, few eagerly await attending Salisbury University or Warwick. Instead, they proudly brandish the colors of University of Maryland, NC State, and a number of other universities. Although SU, PRMC, and Warwick recruit top-ranking PhDs, MDs, MAs, and a number of other professionals and academics, there is an understanding that their children are not here to stay. This year, SU's Thomas C. Bella Vance Honors Program has the largest pool of applicants in their history, and yet only three are from Wycomico County. We, the youth of the Salisbury-Wycomico community, do not feel that we have a place here. We do not feel that we have or should have a stake in our community. I am here before you to introduce a council whose explicit mandate is to halt the growing diaspora of local youth. For a number of years, there's been a lack of commitment to our youth, and the community has not allowed their voices to be heard. The youth before you are here to speak up as they are brimming with new ideas and innovations. Michael Lee has already taken it upon himself to found an after-school program at Bennett Middle School called Peer-to-Peer. This program uses top-performing Bennett and Parkside High School students to tutor struggling middle schoolers. However, he has joined this council as he fears that this program will fall apart after he leaves for college. Monroe Parker has raised a poignant issue that is yet to be properly addressed. Why is there no transportation available for after-school programs? For those students whose parents have to work late, how are they supposed to get home after sports practice? Are we to restrict our school's sports to a specific socioeconomic level? It is not the mandate of this council to answer these questions and concerns, but to raise these issues. I fear that without our community working together to address these issues, the brain drain will inevitably continue. But this council is an important first step in the right direction. I am so proud to say that this council now joins the Planning and Zoning Department in bearing the title Salisbury-Wycomico. As I work with Salisbury University's Institute for Public Affairs and Civic Engagement, Blackwell Library, and Bella Vance Honors Program, I hope to demonstrate to these fine youths the value of staying in Salisbury and Wycomico County. Over the course of his or her term, each member of this council will prepare survey questions about his or her issue to be distributed through Wycomico County high schools. They will use the data gathered from these issues, the advice of experts, and independent research to prepare well-developed policy position papers. These position papers will form the final report of this year's council, which we intend to be utilized by the entire Salisbury-Wycomico community. To this end, we will be holding a public presentation of their final report, where they will present their ideas and hopefully have their concerns addressed. It is because of individuals such as Elizabeth Bella Vance, Harry Basehart, Fran Kane, George Whitehead, who have consistently been committed to this community's youth that I stand before you now. While I spent my year abroad, I proudly wore my Burry shirt as I crossed the Volta River in Ghana, West Africa, and I proudly wore it outside of medieval cathedrals and castles in the U.K. I implore this community to work together and make a commitment to its youth, so that others can feel as proud of this community as I do. And with that, I would like to ask Mr. Bowen to stand up and please swear in this council.
Good evening. I will administer the oath to you as a group, so if each of you will raise your right hands, and if each of you will repeat after me. I instate your names.
I instate my names.
Agree that I will.
Agree that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of a member of.
A member of.
The Salisbury-Wycomico Youth Civics Council.
Salisbury-Wycomico Youth Civics Council.
According to the guidelines established.
According to the guidelines established.
By the Salisbury and Wycomico.
By the Salisbury and Wycomico.
Local governing bodies.
Local governing bodies.
Congratulations to each of you. Thank you very much. Mr. Kramer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next item for council's consideration is Resolution Number 31-2015, introduced by the President of the County Council, confirming the appointment of Tony C. Nichols to the Audit Committee.
Entertaining motion. Excuse me, Mr. Kramer, I think you have the submission of the capital improvement program first.
Maybe I ought to go out and start, come back again. I'm probably only allowed two strikes. Mr. Strausberg and Mr. Culver have the honor and duty of submitting to you the capital improvements budget. Copies are on your table. Mr. Strausberg brought them over late this afternoon.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Glad to have you here.
Well, appreciate it. As you know, this is a time of year that we appreciate the extension on the capital improvement plan, but we would like to submit that, this to you before tonight, and if you've got any questions, we'll be glad to answer them, and we will be having open meetings on this, and let us know what questions you may have. But to go over some of the talking points, I'm going to ask Wayne to cover that, if you would, please.
I'd just like to give you a brief overview, so that particularly the viewing and listening public is aware of the highlights of the plan that's been submitted. The total of projects proposed for 2016 funding is $52,109,109. Of that total, the county would fund $18,596,377. We would incorporate prior borrowing for Bennett Middle School and Bennett High School projects of $10,639,355. Funding from state, federal, and other sources will fund $22,873,377. Of the county funding, it is proposed that $15,558,454 be bonded and $3,037,923 be funded through Pago. There are a number of projects that have been carried in prior CIP plans that will be deferred in this planning horizon, the first being the Phase III West Side Collector, the second being the Regional East Side Library, the third being the Waste to Energy Initiative. Additionally, the following projects are being recommended for review in terms of scope, those being the demolition of the existing Bennett Middle School and West Salisbury Elementary School. The CIP continues to include the replacement and upgrade of the County Emergency Management radio system that, over a three-year period, will incorporate spending of approximately $20 million, according to the plan. It also recommends funding for the following of the Board of Education's Top 20 Priority Projects that were submitted to the executive. The completion of Bennett Middle School, West Salisbury renovations, Beaver Run Sewer, Delmar Systemic Renovations, Wycomico Middle Systemic Renovations, Parkside High School Systemic Renovations, the Mardello Middle and High School Track Portable Classrooms Project, the Mardella Middle and High School Systemic Renovations, and East Salisbury Sustainable Systemic Renovations. And with that, if there are any questions, otherwise, as Mr. Culver previously stated, we'll have a series of public hearings.
Okay, and I know that later on in the agenda, we will be extending the deadline for the adoption to the first meeting in March, so that the council can have a work session at our next meeting in February. So at that time, it would give the council the opportunity, as well as the executive, to re-review what you presented, as well as the public. Appreciate that, and like I say, take your time. If there's any questions, feel free to call us at any point in time. We'll be glad to be here for the open work session.
The proposed CIP will be posted on the county's website first thing tomorrow morning.
Excellent, great.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
May we ask Mr. Strausberg to provide Ms. Holland with a copy of his rundown there?
You may.
I don't know if anyone else could write that fast, but I know I couldn't. Thank you, sir.
One final comment. I would like to thank Dawn Parks from our Finance Department, who has been a tremendous assistance in pulling this document together, as I'm sure all council members realize. It's a pretty comprehensive and very complex document, and she did a tremendous job for us. Very much appreciated.
Thank you. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Kramer?
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, for the third time, the next item before the council is Resolution Number 31-2015, confirming the appointment of Tony C. Nichols to the Audit Committee.
Entertaining motion, introduce Resolution Number 31-2015.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Roser, Mr. Nichols? Good to see you.
Yes, if I can, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. It is my great pleasure to recommend Tony Nichols for appointment to the Wycomico County Internal Auditing Committee. Mr. Nichols will fill a vacancy left by the retirement of Joe Giordano. Joe was a founding member of the Audit Committee, and we greatly appreciate his service. Mr. Nichols is a branch manager for Barrett Business Services. His extensive experience in the area of human resources fills a void in the committee's diverse skill set. Additionally, Tony is very active in the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce, Lower Shore Workforce Alliance, and numerous other associations. The committee and I are pleased that Tony has agreed to join our group, and we respectfully request passage of Resolution 31-2015.
Thank you very much. Mr. Nichols, did you have anything? Any brief comments you wanted?
Brief comments? Humble to be even considered to serve, and happy to serve in whatever capacity that I can to improve Wycomico County, not only for me and my family, but for everyone else.
Thank you. We appreciate your offering your time. I know that you're very busy with the Chamber of Commerce as well, so you're very community-oriented, which is great, and we're certainly glad to have you as a part of our committee for Wycomico County. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Roser. Any comments for the council?
Mr. Roser, you have other members of your committee here. Would you like to introduce them?
The only other, the only other member who could be with us tonight is.
Andy Kim.
Sorry, Mr. Andy Kim.
You're just trying to make me feel like.
It's been a long day, sorry. And we greatly appreciate his services as well. The rest of the members send their regrets. They were not able to attend tonight, but we appreciate their service and their expertise in mentoring as far as the Office of the Internal Auditor. As you know, I'm the only member of the office, and it's very important to have other people looking over the shoulder and reading material before it's released, and I appreciate their voluntary efforts in that regard.
Thank you very much. Any other council comments? All those in favor of Resolution 31-2015, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes. Thank you very much. Mr. Kramer?
Next item is Resolution Number 32-2015, at the request of the County Executive, making a supplementary appropriation of contingency to General Services in the amount of $13,782.23. For council's information, the current balance in the contingency account is $646,258.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Entertaining motion to introduce Resolution 32-2015.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Conrad, I know you're here. Saw you back there. If you could just give us a brief overview.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Rick Conrad, I'm the Purchasing Director, and I'm also involved with the Operating General Services Department. We had a shortfall that was created by a little bit of a miscommunication between my department and the Finance Department. In the past, we'd always done a lump sum amount at the beginning of the year for this category of insurance, and then it was divvied out at the end of the year into the various accounts as a journal entry. Last year, Finance changed the way they did it by divvying it out at the beginning of the year, and when I was asked to give them the projections for the year, I thought it was the end-of-the-year projections. I gave them those numbers, and that's what was plugged in. So we used old numbers instead of revised projections that would have included some contingents for increase in the cost. So that's what this amount covers. It'll make us whole with legit. We have some bills that we're holding that we want to pay, so that's what all of this represents. It's about 2% of the total amount of the legit bill for the year. It represents probably about 1.5% of our total insurance bill countywide, so it just didn't, we just didn't allow for the increase that we had, and it wasn't a major increase in our insurance cost last year, but it was enough to put us, you know, a little bit back on what we needed.
Council questions?
Do we anticipate any other surprises?
No, and I left some contingency, if you noted, I left some contingency. We do have one vehicle that's on order right now that will come in before the end of the fiscal year, and we'll be able to, you know, cover the cost of that. And actually, we probably have some credits, because we're going to get rid of some surplus that should free up a little bit of funds, so we should be fine.
Any other questions? The additional $5,000, was that a result of increases, or was that part of the concern?
That's part of it, because we have a couple bills we're holding right now. There's probably three bills that we're holding right now that are over $1,000 total.
Okay.
So the $8,000, we were just short when we did the PO.
Right.
So, and then the PO's liquidated, so now to reopen the PO, we have to have some money to do that.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor of Resolution 32-2015, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item for council consideration is Resolution Number 33-2015, at the request of the County Executive, adopting Amendment 1-2015 to the Retirement Plan for Employees of Wycomico County and the Board of Education of Wycomico County.
Entertaining motion, introduce Resolution 33-2015.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. We have, excuse me, we have invited our Human Resources Director, Michelle Ennis, to join us. Michelle was instrumental in the negotiation of the agreement that we've made with our Fraternal Order of Police. I wanted to just briefly walk through what the amendment before you accomplishes. The amendment to pension plan provides for a separate sub-account to hold the FOP Disability Trust Funds. This provides the primary mechanism to render the disability payments tax-free. It builds a bridge from our pension plan into the FOP Disability Trust Sub-Acount. That sub-account will be sequestered, if you will, from the assets of both the Board of Education Plan and the County Employees Plan. The initial contribution from the county will be $900,000. That amount was appropriated in the 2015 operating budget. It just simply needs to be transferred to the trust. Michelle has already made arrangements to have that accomplished. Thereafter, it's estimated that further annual contributions of about $19,000 a year may be required. That's dependent upon the performance of the trust and also the incidence, if you will, of any disability claims. Additionally, FOP members will contribute 1.4% of their salary to the trust in order to further fund the trust. The trust will be administered by Croft Lohmeister. It's the firm that already administers our investments for the other two pension trusts. Assuming council approval, a special payroll will be run to cover back pay to July 1 of 2014 with disability withholdings made. We anticipate that would be done in mid-February. Michelle? A medical board will be also appointed to vet any disability claims that may arise. We're in the process of selecting that medical board as we speak. So if that, any questions that you may have, be happy to answer them.
Who selects the medical board?
It's, there would be, there are three members, as I recall, Michelle.
And the employer selects the medical board.
Okay, so the county?
Yes.
And if this requires more than $19,000 a year, when, we'll start seeing that next fiscal year, the year after? When will we start knowing how much it's going to cost, for sure?
I would suspect, I would suspect, Mark, that you would not see any additional requirements in the initial years of the trust. You may recall that the agreement that we negotiated only allows for any prospective disability claims. So based on actuarial assumptions, and we track the actuarial assumptions for the state Leop's plan, we feel that the initial funding is going to be quite adequate, and we had very conservative earnings assumptions in the trust. Our current trust performance exceeds the assumptions that we made when we did the actuarial calculations on the seed money for the trust.
And if this does, you know, later down the road, turn out to be too expensive, I mean, it can be renegotiated? I mean, this is not, how long are we binding ourselves for?
It can be, well, I'll defer to Mr. Baker, but the trust, we have a two-year agreement with the FOP as it stands. The disability trust will not be renegotiated for four years, so it'll be renegotiated the second round of negotiations. Frankly, at the point in time, if this trust were to be exhausted, it's exhausted, and we would start from scratch, and we would have to negotiate a new agreement with the FOP.
What is the medical board, what's the process for the employee to follow if they do not agree with the decisions of the medical board?
I'm gonna let Michelle address that, Joe.
We would, the pension administrator would have to. The pension administrator would have to establish guidelines in which would make them eligible in any appeal process as part of the qualifying and continuation on receiving the benefit.
Okay. We would have, we would have decision-making to do.
Yes, clear process.
And isn't there a three-year limitation to filing?
Yes.
If there's an injury, the employee would have to file within three years of the injury?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, has to be a timely filing.
Councilman Hall?
Michelle, what's the difference between ordinary disability benefit and accidental disability benefit?
Accidental disability benefit is it occurred as basically in the performance of the job. Ordinary disability could be any other medical condition that is not job-related, that would qualify you for disability, a long-term disability.
Such as an illness?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other documents that may impact this agreement that are not included in what we see in front of us?
There is one more agreement. There is one more agreement that will come before council, and I will defer to Mr. Baker. There has to be an ordinance passed to deem the disability payments tax-free.
It's a worker's comp.
But I can let Ed explain that to you.
Pretty good explanation. We'll bring it to you in the next meeting. It's just an ordinance that says our benefits are in the nature of a worker's comp provision.
Any other questions? You had mentioned that if the trust is exhausted, if the trust is exhausted, it's just exhausted. Doesn't, wouldn't that open us up to any type of liability at all?
Not under the terms that you agreed with, John.
Okay.
Both parties know that if the trust is exhausted, that we're back to square one.
So that is understood.
It's clearly documented in the agreement.
Okay. The only other question I had was in the members' final average earnings in the section thirty-four B. Is that salary, average salary earnings, or would that include salary or earnings including overtime?
Salary.
Salary.
Salary base, okay. Okay. Any other questions? Where we were. This is, I do have a comment. This has been a long, drawn-out process.
It has.
And I want to thank the Executive's Office prior, and this executive too, and everyone for the work they've done on it. I know it's been a struggle. We've got it done. Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman?
I agree. It has been a long, drawn-out process, and it has been a lot of work. And I do thank everybody that has worked on this, and I think the FOP will appreciate the fact that it is being passed at this time.
Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor of Resolution Thirty-three, two thousand and fifteen say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion to carry? Resolution passes. Thank you very much.
The next item for county council's consideration is the resolution added this evening, Resolution Number Thirty-four, two thousand and fifteen, extending the date for adoption of the capital improvements program from the third Tuesday in February to March third, two thousand and fifteen. Upon the passage of this resolution, I would invite the county council to consider that the council hold a work session on February the seventeenth, that's your next meeting, and that the county council also hold a public hearing on the capital improvements budget and program on February the seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Entertained a motion to introduce Resolution Thirty-four, two thousand and fifteen.
So moved.
Second? Discussion? Yes, and we will put those on the agenda for that date.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion to carry? Resolution passes.
Thank you. That's all I have for now.
Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir. The only item I have on my agenda is a public hearing. A notice was given that the county council would hear public comments on changing from an appointed school board to an elected school board this evening at six-thirty, and it's after six-thirty.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. We will now open the floor to a public hearing. One comment I would like to make before we begin the public hearing. There was some concern expressed as to why the council had made a decision and had requested of the legislature to begin the process of an elected school board or what you would call a hybrid school board. It was simply done because in order to meet the guidelines of the General Assembly, we had to act at that specific time. The twenty-second of January was our absolute deadline. So we took those measures to move it forward. At the same time, we understood that we would be holding a public hearing and taking into account anything that will be said tonight, and the transcripts of what is being said tonight will also be forwarded to Annapolis to help them with their decision-making process as well. So it will be completely inclusive in the final outcome of this entire process. So if you could please, if you have any comments, go to the podium, state your name and your address, or at least Wycomico County, and I would ask you to try to be as brief as possible, and if we could avoid repetition so that everyone will have a chance to speak and we can all get out of here at a reasonable time. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name's John Palmer, I live on Star Road in Delmar, Maryland. And I'm here tonight to thank the members of the county council and the administrators who had a hand in the elected school board process. I don't know if everybody knows it, but at one point in that process, everything had slowed to a crawl, and it wasn't going anywhere. And Councilman Joe Holloway came up with a proposed type of a hybrid system that allowed for five elected members and two appointed members. The two appointed members are appointed by our county executive, and this keeps the school board under the control of the citizens in Wycomico County. The recommendation was then approved unanimously, and this is very important because when you go up to the legislature, they like to see everything approved unanimously, no division. Councilman Mark Kilmer had done his homework on the structure and wording of the document that was to go to Annapolis, and this was a big help in meeting that time requirement. Our county attorney, Mr. Baker, was then quickly able to complete the document and get it signed by all seven council members. I think this was an excellent example of teamwork, and I hope to see more of it in the future. And Mr. Cannon, I would like to thank you for putting that issue on your docket in the manner that you did. Otherwise, to time constraints, we were real tight, and we might not have had a chance to get this moved forward this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Kay Gibson, taxpayer, resident, and voter at Wycomico County. I can make this very short. We have a year and a half to debate the merit of both types of school boards. I'd like us to have the opportunity to debate it, and I'd like the citizens of Wycomico County to have a choice. We don't need to, you know, I don't feel any need to discuss the pros and cons until we've all done our research. But thank you for giving us an opportunity. Over fifty percent of my property tax goes towards the school system, and we want the most efficient, wonderful school system that we can have for our money. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson.
Jim Jaster, two hundred Philip Morris Drive. I'm encouraged that this has finally gone to the recommendation of the legislature. I'm not totally happy with the hybrid, but I'm willing to compromise, and I certainly will vote for it if it comes to the question on the ballot. I also went to Annapolis and expressed my approval of the proposed legislation to Delegate Anderton. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Snyder, six-two-zero-two, Airshire Drive, Salisbury, Maryland. I put this in a letter form. Dear council members, my name is David Snyder and have lived in the state of Maryland my entire life and currently live in Wycomico County. I am asking for an elected school board. My reason is I have no children in the school system, nor have I for several years. As a taxpayer that supports the school system, I feel I have a right to know how my tax dollars are being spent. I do not attend PTA meetings, speak with school teachers or administrators. I feel that my check and balance would be an elected school board. If I am not satisfied, I can either vote in or vote out the board members. I am not under any kind of illusion that an elected school board will magically solve all the problems, but it would be, would give taxpayers, as I, community stakeholders, a chance to have a voice in terms of having people held accountable for the direction of our schools. From my personal research, elected school boards are not new to Maryland. Ten of Maryland's twenty-four subdivisions have partially elected school boards. Nationally, ninety-six percent of school boards are elected. Proponents, as myself, say elected school boards offer accountability because voters can potentially oust those they don't like. I would also argue that they are more connected to the communities because anyone can run for the seats. Members would not, wouldn't need to be politically, political insiders with connections to whoever is making appointments. I ask my letter be forwarded to the state legislature showing I am in favor of elected school board in Wycomico County, and let the voters decide. And after this speech, send up to Annapolis.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder.
Dr. Greg Belcher, Wycomico County, resident and in the interest of full disclosure, member of the Wycomico County Republican Central Committee. I too favor more local control regarding our school board. I think it was mentioned, but I want to point out and make it clear to any of the folks listening at home that the legislation, it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, the legislation that's pending in Annapolis would only give the citizens of Wycomico County the opportunity to vote on an elected school board and/or hybrid in the next election, which again is two thousand and sixteen. So as was pointed out, we've got a little time to think and talk about this, but it is important to the folks in Annapolis that they do hear from us, the citizens here in this county, and understand that the vast majority of it, in my opinion, do support this. And so that they'll feel encouraged to go ahead and push this piece of legislation forward, giving us the opportunity as citizens of this county to vote up or down whether or not this is what the local citizens want. So again, I'm in favor. I would just like to see that the citizens of this county have an opportunity to determine as well whether or not this is something that they want. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Belcher.
My name's Johnny Miller, and I'm a resident here in Wycomico County. And I'd like to echo what Mr. Palmer said. I'd like to thank this council for not dropping the ball on this and getting it to the General Assembly. In particular, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Kilmer, for following through on the details on this. For those new council members, this is not new. This legislation was sent up by the county council, Resolution Number Two-nine-two-zero-one-one in two thousand and eleven. Gail Barkovich was the president at the time, and we had consensus back then to send it up. It was a straw vote. It was a straw poll to be put on the ballot, and it passed the House. The vote was one hundred and forty-three to one. There was only one person that was against it, and there was one abstention. That was Sheila Hickson. Delegate Oates was against, so it was one forty-three to one, went into the Senate, and it passed unanimous. And then it went to the governor, and the governor didn't sign it. So I'm glad that that was in two thousand and eleven. Here we are, fast started again. Actually, I looked back on the date, and it was February fifth of two thousand and eleven when it was sent up. So now it's put to the General Assembly again, and I believe we have a governor this time which will let the people decide who they want to represent, and as opposed to the governor appointing these members. So I want to congratulate you for it, and I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
My name is Tyler Harwood. I live at seventeen thirty-three Woodbrook. I want to thank the council for giving the opportunity to have this hearing. I'll be real brief. I'd just like to say that I favor Wycomico County having an elected school board. Of course, you know, politics is always changing, going both ways, like ebb and flow of the tide. And, you know, it switches between the two parties all the time. We saw it this year, and we'll see it again. So in my opinion, having an elected school board will ensure that those who hold those seats best represent the values and priorities held by the people of Wycomico County, given that they're going to be electing them. And that, and the hope is that that will create a level of accountability to those residents where, right now, I don't believe that exists. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ken Gaskins. I live at fourteen-twenty West Road in the county. I don't have a problem with the elected school board members. The community has a problem that it's been done ass-backwards. You sent it up to the assembly already. They already have a bill posted already for the election due tomorrow when this meeting is over, and the community hasn't had any input in it. And the community should have had input in it before it went, even if we had to wait till next year. And I understand you said it was a time-sensitive matter, but the time-sensitive matter should, the public should have had a right to speak before that went to there and had legislation already drafted.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gaskins.
Good evening, Mr. President and council members. My name is Harry Basheart, and I live in Salisbury, Maryland. And I'm a member of the Wycomico County Democratic Central Committee, although I'm not speaking for the Central Committee tonight. And I have two comments, and I think I should maybe give another comment before that in that I hate to say this in front of two of my former students, Mr. Cannon and Mr. Culver, but I didn't do all my homework. I haven't, I haven't read the resolution. So the first thing I have to comment on may already be in the resolution. If not, I hope it could be added. For the two appointed members, I think we should have language that says, "In appointing members to the county Board of Education, the appointing official shall ensure, to the extent practicable, that the total makeup of the county board reflects gender, ethnic, and racial diversity." Caroline County has that in its county charter when they adopted the elected school board. In fact, that language is almost identical to what Caroline County has. And I think tonight, looking at the diversity of the Salisbury-Wycomico Youth Civics Council, I think we have a good reason to have this type of language in our resolution or in the law if it's eventually adopted. So that was the first thing I wanted to say. The second thing I want to say is, I know going against what the resolution has, at least I'm pretty sure it does, and I would like to see appointment by the governor stay in for the two appointed members. The county executive decides on the school budget, at least to some extent, that's developed by the school board. So the county executive has a powerful voice already. And allowing the county executive to appoint two members has the potential, I think, to reduce the independence of the school board to deliberate and to decide policies. So I would recommend that in your deliberations you'll have over the next few days, that you consider appointment by the governor to allow that to continue. Finally, a reminder with all respect. I know there's a particular political context now. Political contexts can change, and your decision is not just for this county executive and this county council and this Board of Education, but your decision is for all future county executives and county council members and boards of education. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Basheart. Yes. I think Mr. Baker was taking notes on your recommendation with Caroline County. Thank you. Thank you.
Mary Ashanti, President of Wycomico County and ACP, and I am a resident of Wycomico County. I support what Dr. Basheart just said and wholeheartedly eaten apart about the governor. So we support that. The other thing is, Mr. Gaskin basically said, I don't know if he got the same phone calls I got or not, but he basically said what I, the concerns that we had. I did send you a letter, and I thank you for addressing it in the front of it, but I still have to share for the minutes. have to share for the minutes. We received several complaints about public hearing, public input on the elected board of Wycomico Education for Wycomico County and various people expressed concern over the fact that the decision was made and it was set forth before they had input. I think that even though you're having this meeting, some folks are discouraged because they don't think that and a little bit confused about the process. Going forward, we really hope that this does not become a practice. From me knowing you all and whatever, I don't think there was any malice or anything like that, but the folks that have called me even today have a concern that it was not done in the proper way. So and the other thing is whoever made copies of the letter and this, I thank them for it, but I didn't see anything that said that the board would be nonpartisan. And I thought that, so is this the only part to this letter?
It's required by law already. It's required by law that elected school boards have to be nonpartisan.
Oh, good, good. Okay, so we don't have to worry about that. Is this the only thing that was sent up? This says something about an attachment and I didn't see an attachment. So is this the only wording?
The language, the language that Mr. Baker prepared was the attachment and that was, it is online with the briefbook if you didn't receive it. I don't know why it wasn't included with what you have.
Okay, but since we're having a hearing, whatever, could we have Mr. Baker to read what it says if you don't mind so that the folks out there and myself kind of have an idea of what was said. I viewed the interactions and as I told you all, I was pleased that you all thought about diversity and everything like that. So but if we could hear the wording of it, I would really appreciate it if it's possible. Thank you.
Go ahead. Yes, thanks. Yes, you're good.
All right. My name is Mark MacIver and I am the chairman of Republican County Central Committee. Thank you, Ken. And can I do a quick PBS, Public Announcement? We are accepting applications for board of elections currently to send to the governor under our old system and we have some vacancies available. Anybody listening or here in the room, we'd be glad to accept your applications and looks like it'll be due around the end of February this month, so I wouldn't wait too long.
Do you mean Board of Education?
What did I say?
Elections.
Yeah, we had a long day with elections, I'm sorry, and they both begin with E and that's been challenging. So sorry about that. No, I did mean Board of Education. So very briefly, first of all, I'd like to say that I really believe that everybody on the Board of Education and the superintendent, everybody in the county and the county council, we all have good intentions. I mean, the most precious thing in the world is our children and I can't believe for one second that anybody would be, you know, mouth against their children. Everyone wants to do the right thing, but why have an elected school board? It's because the current system is broken. And let's talk about diversity. I think diversity is good, but I think diversity in a matter of a school board being represented by businessmen, educators, contractors, school bus drivers. I think that we need everybody's input to build a really strong board of a very broad in knowledge so that we can make some very educated decisions. And so I do support that and at first I didn't like the, I didn't really think about it, but the appointment of the, by the executive of two members. And I think after a while, I said, you know, that's probably a good idea. We have an executive that is elected by the Wycomico County citizens and he can look at the mix of the current board and he can add to it and what he feels is lacking from a knowledge base or a participation base. So once again, I'd like to thank the county council here for moving this process forward. I would like to urge the citizens to contact their state senators and delegates because that's going to be an important issue too. We need to have both of our senators on board, both Addy Eckard and Jim Mathis and hopefully we can contact them to show support for that and of course, all our delegates. Once again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. MacIver.
Good evening. My name is Mike Dunn. I live on Forest Lane in Salisbury. Thank you, Mr. President, for the opportunity to speak. I want to applaud Mr. Holloway for coming up with the hybrid model. I think that's a nice compromise, if you will. I have no skin in the game. The Maryland Association of Boards of Education, they have no skin in the game. They have said that there is no difference between the effectiveness of an elected board or an appointed board. Ninety-five percent, as someone has stated, ninety-five, ninety-six percent of the boards of education across the country are elected. So I'm probably going to be in support of this and will and vote for it. I guess I'm standing here today because one of the things that I'm hearing a lot is the word accountability. Mr. Dodd was very recently on the Board of Education. We've all known friends, community members who have been appointed members of the Board of Education. I doubt that any one of them, and I'm looking right at you, sat there and made any decision based on worrying about what the governor had to say about the decision. They were thinking about the students. So I'm just simply saying that accountability is absolutely important, but I think as we go forward with this debate, let's remember that we've had a lot of people that we know, a lot of good people in the community who are currently serving on the Board of Education, who have given countless hours and hours and hours of service. So just, I just would encourage us as we debate this, quote unquote. I'm thrilled that it's going to go to a referendum that you're proposing. I think let's get this behind us. I think it's a distraction. I think there are bigger questions relative to education than an elected school board. So let's go ahead and get this out of the way. But as we move forward, let's be careful how we talk about the word accountability because these are, again, our friends and our neighbors who have served over the years with honor and dignity and hard time and it's basically, Mr. Dodd, correct me if I'm wrong, it's basically a volunteer gig. There's a little bit of compensation. So just as we move forward, let's be thankful to those who have served and are serving and let the citizens decide how we move forward. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Any other comments?
Julie Bruington, also with the Republican Central Committee. I just really wanted to come and thank you all for giving another opportunity, another chance for the voters and the citizens of Wycomico County to bring our decisions for the education of our children to a local level, down to who represents us. I think it's extremely important. I think really the question here is, do we trust our voters and our citizens to decide if we want to make the decisions of who represents us on the Board of Education or will we prefer that somebody in Annapolis, regardless of who it is or what political party, makes decisions from Annapolis? I have two children in the public schools and I would like to see just more involvement altogether. So I think it's wonderful that you guys came together so efficiently and quickly and made the compromises. I would prefer to see a fully elected school board. I think our citizens are competent to decide on diversity and ability all on their own, but I'm satisfied that we're making steps forward and I understand also the reason why you did it the way it was done. I do understand some people were not aware, but it was my understanding that the timeline was not even made known to the council up until very recently before your prior meeting. So I just want to thank you. I appreciate it, appreciate the job you have done on this matter and I'm proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bruington. Any other public comments? Seeing none, that closes the public hearing. We'll move into council comments. Any council comments at this time? That was a public hearing. Are there any public comments right now? I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you very much. Not to confuse the audience or the viewers, as I'm confused myself. That was a public hearing specifically for the Board of, the proposal for an elected or a hybrid Board of Education. At this time, we now would open the floor for any public comments in general. Thank you, Councilman Dodd. I appreciate your keeping me straight. Somebody has to keep me straight. Mr. Palmer.
Good evening, John Palmer again. I was recently part of an engineering team that conducted a material inspection of the Westside Elementary School. The inspection opened my eyes as to the approach being taken by our Board of Ed on maintaining construction of our school buildings. I would like to see this type of inspection performed on the old Bennett Middle School with the intention of renovating part of the middle school into a Wycomico County office complex. This is the same approach taken by Somerset County with the old Washington High School. Now, I don't know if any of you have been down, the Princess Anne have toured the Washington High School, but they did a renovation on it. It was a very good renovation. It's beautiful inside and it serves a lot of county offices in this one renovated school Bennett has a great location, plenty of parking, short transit goes past it many days. It has easy community access. If our Board of Ed has to expand from their present building, I believe it would make a great location to put them right in the middle of the center of one of the jewels of our county in the Bennett High School. I believe we can bring in the election board, liquor board, SWEAT and other areas that we are renting right now and that this rent could then go towards paying on the bond or however we would fund the renovation of part of the school that would be used for this county office complex. I'm putting this out publicly just to give everybody a chance to think about it and don't just say, hey, there's John just going off again because I think this, we have a new county exec, we're moving in different directions now and I think this might be a viable option for the county. Mr. Culver, if you should wish to have anybody go on an inspection team again, I would be glad to do it and again, the price I'm sure would be right for the county, which would be free. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Good evening to President Cannon and the members of the county council. I'm Melva Wright, principal at the West Salisbury Elementary School. I do have a few letters from some interested students at West Salisbury concerning the fate of West Salisbury that I will share with you tonight. I am here to speak about the county executive officers' current conditions and proposed solutions for the West Salisbury Elementary School. Where I do appreciate the fact that the West Salisbury Project is still on the minds of our county council, I am concerned about recommendations that have come after not quite a two-hour visit on the morning of January the 10th. After thoroughly reading the document and being congratulated by multiple community members after last night's news report, I would like to know the true current standing of the project. Are there any established timelines? Please share with us what will happen at this point. Is this the final say on the debate of West Salisbury replacement or renovation? Just a few questions that we would love to see answered. Who shall I share these with?
If you give those to Mr. Kramer, thank you. Thank you. And Mrs. Wright, we will certainly keep you in the loop as we go through the entire process with the work sessions, et cetera, okay? Thank you very much. Mr. Gaskins.
Mr. President, Ken Gaskins again. Just to go back to some of the stuff from Mrs. Melvin, where it says the West Salisbury Project, I mean, there's a lot of concern in the community that you're telling us now that we can spend $2 million and renovate this school and bring it up to standards, which I find a little hard to believe, only due to the fact that I don't think either of the five council people that went to that school, either one of them is an engineer or has a degree in engineering and can make all those established numbers together in a two-hour visit. If they can, they don't need to be on the council. We need to put them in other positions in the county so that they can do some better work for us. Secondly, it's a understanding that if we go to build a new school, the state will give us roughly ninety-seven percent of state funds to build a new school. If we don't, we're going to renovate, the taxpayers in Wycomico County are going to have to absorb that bill, you know, and that doesn't make sense to me. I mean, if we're going to get, if we can get the county to pay, the state to pay for it, then why shouldn't we have the state pay for it? Thirdly, it is my understanding that during the council meeting, there were at least a couple of councilmen who said there were a couple of projects that they wanted to remove off of the capital budget and my concern was, were those the two projects that they had already picked and now they're going to use those? And one of those projects was the Civic Center and one was West Salisbury Elementary School that they have decided to take out of your capital budget. I don't know if they did or didn't, but the concern was, it was prior to the election of the governor, that decision was made that we're going to take a couple of projects off the table. So if that's the case, maybe somebody needs to rethink what we're doing and let's do what's right for the community because the Westside community deserves the same quality in schools that Fruitland, Pittsfield, Parsonsburg, Willard or any other school in Wycomico County yet. Not a Band-Aid effect and that's what you've seen, you're going to do to West Salisbury is you're going to put a $2 million Band-Aid on it and tell the community in five more years, well, we're going to close that school and we're just going to leave an eyesore sitting over here because we don't feel like putting any more money in it. I don't think that's fair to the community. That school's been there for 40 years, along with Glen Avenue. They were built identical. Glen Avenue's been remodeled. Why can't West Salisbury be remodeled? It's due to get the same kind of quality and the kids at that school will need the same kind of benefits as the kids in all the rest of the schools in Wycomico County. They should not be slighted because it's on the west side of Salisbury.
Thank you, Mr. Gaskins. Any other public comments?
Dave VanderWassen. I live in Delmar, Maryland. I only found out about the West Salisbury evaluation report this morning, so I'm a little not up to speed on it, but I was kind of taken aback by what I saw presented as inferred as being done by architects and engineers and the qualified team. There's a process that the public school construction program requires with the IAC, sorry, IAC. Just skipped past that. There is an architect on that report. There are no engineers on that report. The report does not meet the requirements of the IAC. You're about to step forward into grounds that doesn't follow the process. And when people don't follow the process, I might not agree with what, you know, the construction group for the county comes up with on all their projects or how they do it or what order, how they prioritize them, but they are following a process and they go through and they evaluate the projects and they prioritize them. they go through and they evaluate the projects, and they prioritize them. You're about to look at suggestions to put in split systems in there. The state requires that you evaluate four systems for lifecycle costs in mechanical systems, one of which has to be geothermal. That was not done. The report's been done, put out there. There's no ventilation mentioned in that report. I'm just looking at a couple of quick mechanical things. You run down a slippery slope when you start renovating this thing and trying to state it's going to come up to standards. There's a lot of standards that have evolved, and what happens, again, I don't always agree with, hey, it's cheaper to tear it down and start over, but you do start, get to a point where when you, you can't just go in there and put air conditioning in that school because it's not a replacement in kind. You have to now meet all the codes of the mechanical system when you put it in there because it's now an upgrade. So, I suggest caution in just, and then, in getting back to the systems that they are. If you want to mold the systems and the people that have doing them to do it a little more to where you want to see, that's great, but just to bypass it and come up with your own way to come up with an evaluation that has no engineers on it, but they're alluded to as engineers, I find some fault with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ann B. Southeaussee, Wycomico County. Let's go to the well for the money. Let's get our bucket. Let's put it in the well. But who put the money in the well? The taxpayers of Maryland.
Thank you, Ms. Southeaussee.
Jim Jester again. I'm quite knowledgeable on maintenance and construction of buildings. I worked for a contractor for a number of years. I personally went out and looked at that school, and I looked at the, is it Westside Elementary? That has been rehabbed, and it's made a nice building. My kids went to school at West Salisbury and were very pleased with it. And I called a couple of people that have done maintenance on that building, and one in particular that's retired, and they said, "With just renovation, my, you know, maintenance, basically, that that building could be used for many, many years." Thank you.
Thank you.
President Cannon, and members of the County Council, and also to the county exec. My name is Mary Ashanti, president of Wycomico County NAACP, and thankful to be here, and that's God's blessing on these proceedings. I listened to this gentleman and the other two people that spoke in reference to West Salisbury, and so I don't have really much to say about that, because some time ago, we told you that we were in support of the replacement of West Salisbury. I think going forward, from what I'm hearing, there maybe needs to be another meeting, another something, and whatever, to, I guess, address what this gentleman said. So, that looked like it would be a wise thing to do. The other thing is too, is that when you do projects like, get into vulnerable projects like this, you have to be concerned about, I wouldn't say feelings, but you have to be concerned about how things appear to all citizens. I heard one person said that, talk about taxpayers, and I think that all of us are taxpayers. The Westside are taxpayers, too. So, when we talk about things like that, we, let's address it in a way that's not divisive. Let's address it in a way of doing the best thing for all children. So, my other reason for being up here is that I want to thank President, I want to thank President Cannon, County Executive Culver, Councilman Davis, and Councilman Holloway, and Councilman Kilmer. Did I say your name right?
(laughing)
Okay, good. They came to, we had a meeting in January the 22nd, and they came out and talked about their focus and priorities for Wycomico County, and also listened to what folks had to share. And I think everybody walked away, including them, walked away feeling, feeling good about the encounter. So, I want to thank you for, I want to thank you for that, for that. The other thing is, this, as we know, this is Black History Month, and the NAACP is having its 18th Annual African-American Heritage Celebration. It will be this Saturday, 3:00, at Chipman Culture Center. It is free. The theme is "Celebrate the Legacy of African-American History." And this year, we're doing something different than we haven't done in a long time, is the keynote speaker is a member of, I think, the middle school of the school system. I found out he was a minister, also, a motivational speaker, and so, apparently, we're doing some good things with Wycomico County in reference to education. Also, so he will be the keynote speaker. Also, we have the dancers from New Dimensions Worship Center. A young man named Jahiel Smith will be entertaining, and we just recently found out that the American Spiritual Ensemble will also be there. So, we're hoping that you all will join us in having a good time, and it's free. Thank you.
Thank you, President Ashanti. Any other public comments? Seeing none. Councilman Dodd, is it okay if we proceed with council comments?
If you say so.
Thank you. Any council comments at this time?
I would like to make a comment. The measure that the County Council has just gone through and submitted legislation to the General Assembly with an elected school board does not reflect with the current board members. As Mr. Dunn said earlier, there are a lot of dedicated members on the Board of Education, and they don't do it for the pay, because the pay is not there, the small stipend. They do it with, for the citizens. They serve for the citizens, and they have the children in their heart with every decision that they make. I served for five years. I do know that. What this council has heard prior to me getting back on the council, going back as far as 2011, 2010, is that they want an elected school board. So, this council listened, and then they moved forward with this. I can assure you that the current local delegation is not going to move on this until a hearing has been heard, as we have done tonight, and that's what they wanted to hear before they make any decision on what they're going to do with their legislation.
Thank you, Councilman Dodd. And Councilman Davis?
Yes, I'd like to speak on the West Salisbury issue. When we was at the meeting, I was under the statement that once the findings were put together, that there was going to be another meeting together, not only with the recommendation, but with the board, so they could come together to see what can be ironed out. Because, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Ferret's here, I mean, all these recommendations are being made, but they still have to go through the state to be approved. So, I think there should have been another meeting, instead of this being put out there, just as if it was a one-shot deal, and this was the done deal. So, I really think that some more planning and preparation need to be put into the West Salisbury School.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Any other council comments? Under presidential comments, yes?
Yeah, I just, I would like to thank everyone for coming out and speaking on our school board proposal. I want to say that, you know, it's always a good night when we all, everyone seemed largely okay, maybe not thrilled with most of what we've done. And, you know, we had Mike Dunn praising Joe Holloway, and I'm going to praise Mike Dunn. I agree with most of what he said, and, you know, a good portion of what Dr. Basart said. I think that, you know, it is important to remember, what we're doing doesn't reflect upon the current Board of Education members. What, you know, in terms of how their terms are right now, and people going off the board, I think most of the people who are currently on the board now would be off the board or be in a second term by the time a lot of these changes took place. So, this should be in no way seen as a way to, you know, attack those who are on the board. I think we all have great respect for the people who are on the board, even if we may disagree with them from time to time. And to Dr. Basart's point, I think we are all aware that this is, that politics changes, and that those who are in power now aren't in power then. And I don't think any of us supported a hybrid school board in that way to give Bob Culver the power to appoint people to the school board, but it was to give the county executive that position power. Just like right now, I'm fairly happy that, you know, Governor Hogan's in office. We share the same party, and I'm, you know, happier with him making school board appointments than I was with Governor O'Malley, but I would prefer that the voters of Wycomico County make those choices and not Governor Hogan, even though we happen to be aligned politically. And so I think we all made that decision based not on who's currently in office, but based on the overall structure of the board. So, I appreciate that you said that, Dr. Basart, and I hope that you recognize that these are some of the things that we were talking about. And to the point, we, I also do understand the frustration that the hearing came after we sent our letter in. That was something which I think all of us were concerned about, too, but the deadline was the deadline, and we had to work with that. And as I think I expressed to you, Mrs. Ashanti, if you're hearing calls from the community, go ahead and give them my phone number. I was probably the one maybe pushing this harder than others. So, if people want to express concern, you know, give me a call. I'm happy to talk about that. And if public comment would have been overwhelmingly against us, we could have communicated that with the legislators, and we could have pulled it if need be. So, all those things were things that we thought about, and we tried to accommodate some of these things as best we could. To Mr. Gaskins' point about 97% of school construction being paid for, I believe that that's 97% of qualified construction costs, which is not 97% of the entire school construction cost. It's 97% of a subset of that cost, which works out to substantially less than 97%. And this is, you know, this is not a comment in favor or opposed to new construction, just to clarify that matter, that the state would not pay for 97% of any new school we built, as I understand it. So, just to make sure that was clear. So, but thank you, everyone, for coming out, and thank you to Mrs. Ashanti for inviting us to the NAACP meeting. It was a very good meeting, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Holloway.
Oh, yes. I was at the meeting at Westside, and I want to thank the Executive's Office for thinking outside the box a little bit. I think maybe if we'd had those opportunities before with some of the other buildings, and some of the other things that's going on in the county, that there'd been some different decisions made. I do know that, I read the report, and I appreciate the people that went out there and took their time pro bono to do this, people that were concerned about our community, concerned about the school. It's, it's going to be planned. I'm sure the Board of Education's not going to take whatever money the county gets it and just say, "We're going to do this and this." There's going to be plans made of where the money's going to be spent, be spent in the right way. I look forward to that process in the future. On the elected school board, I do understand the concerns about the hearing and the way this took place, but we've had public hearings on the elected school board, I think, for about the past five years, in one way or the other, not necessarily on this bill number, but we've been having public hearings about elected school board, or the process of getting the voters to vote on elected school board, either one, for, I think, four or five years anyway, if I'm not mistaken. So, we have heard the public. We've heard the concerns on both sides. So, I think we've been through the process pretty thorough. Thank you.
Any other council comments? With presidential comments, I did not point out some members in the audience. Tim Spees with the Salisbury City Council, thank you for being here tonight. We do have Dr. John Frederickson, Superintendent of Wycomico County Schools, and we do have the President of the Wycomico County Board of Education, Mr. Ron Willie. Thank you for being here as well. We appreciate your presence. And Mike Dunn neglected to inform us that he is a past member of the, past president of the Salisbury City Council. So, we do appreciate everybody's input. A lot of very positive input tonight, and I really appreciate that as a council. Very good suggestions that were made that we will take into consideration. And as I had stated before, keep in mind that the transcripts of this will be forwarded to the representatives in Annapolis, so that they will have a clear understanding of where the community stands in regard to this, to the issue of an elected hybrid school board. I would also like to mention that over the past week, I had the opportunity to visit the Entrepreneurial Center at the library. It's going very well. They're doing an excellent job there, and I'm really glad to see that progress being made. President Ashanti and some council members had mentioned the meeting that members of the council had with the NAACP. I personally have been to a ton of meetings in the last several years, and I found that to be probably one of the most enjoyable and productive meetings that I've attended with council members. It was, there's a very good exchange, and very, very good points to consider. One example was a suggestion that there be a better GED or a GED program at Corrections, Department of Corrections. So, the first, the first thing we might try to do is see how this Entrepreneurial Center with the library could maybe coordinate with the Department of Corrections. Don't know if that's a solution, but it's, it's an open dialogue, which I, which I think if we hadn't, if they hadn't had their meeting, and we hadn't had the motivation that we see in Wycomico County towards these efforts, it never could even be considered as a suggestion. So, I'm looking forward to seeing that, how that solution might come to effect. Outside of that, I do appreciate everybody being here tonight. I think it was a healthy discussion. We will certainly take everything into consideration as we move forward in the process. The only other thing I would say is that the governor is having his State, the State address tomorrow. I'm not quite sure of the time, but it, as I understand it, it will be tomorrow, so Google it, see what, you know, what, if you're interested. That being said, I have nothing else. I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn, so that we can go into an open work session followed by a closed work session.
Let's move.
Second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much. Yeah, sure. Yeah, we'll take a five-minute recess.